To order on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the high school library. Could I have a roll call, please? Wait for me to get back to my desk.
Mitch McCallum?
Here.
Michelle Murphy?
Here.
Adam Markema?
Here.
Travis Lyman?
Here.
Ryan Meyer?
Here.
Edith Ridgeway?
Here.
Ian Swenson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Before I get started with the agenda and our meeting, I just want to let everybody know, I'm just going to read what we published again so everybody knows. This meeting is special. This meeting is a special meeting called by the Board of Directors. The School Board will conduct a public hearing at the above-noted location and time on school wrestling program in the Board's recent decision to dissolve that program. At the hearing, any resident or taxpayer may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of this decision. Individual speaking will be limited to three minutes apiece. No action will be taken in this meeting. The School Board will consider the comments from the hearing and will place the wrestling issue on the agenda for the Board's regular meeting, which is this Thursday, on Thursday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. The issue may be, maybe read, yeah, at that time. No public comment on the wrestling program will be accepted at the Thursday meeting. We're holding this meeting because honestly, people, we didn't want to have a five-hour meeting on Thursday, start at seven and go until midnight. But we also wanted, me and Dan talked about it, and we also wanted to make sure people that felt they needed a voice had their voice. So, not really usual for us to call special meetings, but there were enough people in the community that were concerned, we decided to do it. We are going to adhere to the three-minute for everybody. This is for you to make comments. We are not going to discuss back and forth between the Board and the public. This is for you to get up and tell us what you want to tell us, and we will take that all into consideration. I please ask, you know, everybody be polite, respectful to everybody else. If somebody decides not to be polite and respectful, I will politely and respectfully ask them to, okay? Looking out in the audience, I don't see we'll have any issues with that. But that's just a little thing I got to say when we have special meetings. People are very passionate about this. So, called meeting to order, had a, we have a quorum, approval, amend the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Motion.
Motion second. I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next one is a public hearing on the School Board's wrestling program. I did have a request. We have a couple of wrestlers here, and the request was to let them go first if, unless anybody has an objection to that. I don't see any issue in letting these young people go first. There's somebody that came in late. Were you wanting to speak?
He's a wrestler. And I'm supportive. He's going to go with the other guy.
So, are you all going as a group?
Yeah.
Okay, so you all have three minutes as a group, okay? I will start the timer when you start talking. I will tell you when you have two minutes left and when you have one minute left, and then when you guys are done, okay? So, it's kind of like speech competition a little bit.
Do please introduce yourself.
Yes, before I even start the timer, I want you to introduce yourselves.
I am Abraham Russell.
I'm Lucas Evans.
Kevin Anthony.
Sammy Amorim.
Okay, great gentlemen. Whenever you're ready, I'll start. You start and I'll start the timer.
So, the first thing, when wrestling got dissolved, we had a choice to either go Garner or Clarion or Eagle Grove. I decided to go to Clarion and have now started doing wrestling practice there every Wednesday at seven or eight, according to dates. Then they usually go around for an hour and there's two or three coaches to help out if needed. And usually, not even half the teams there, but that's still twice as many kids as we usually have at Belmont, Brooklyn Mats. And they, I think they just do their job because they have more people and more kids to help out. So, get more practice in.
I've decided to go to Clarion.
I'm planning on playing in the Belmont Club, too. It's a lot funner with a whole team. It's more like a family rolling around, having fun the whole time and learning at the same time.
I haven't decided on where I should go yet. I do see that a fuller team would be more beneficial overall.
Last year, when we had wrestling, we only had one coach that would help out. Butler, he's a great coach, but we just need more coaches and more people. Everybody's just, go there and guaranteed lose. Because you're already giving up, I think it was like thirty-six points. And even if we pinned and we passed six points every person, we still want to need to win. We, Butler told us, you're not there to win the show. It's just there to have fun and try your best, see if you can win personally. Because we just didn't have people to go on and do.
Yes, done? Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. You did good. I'm not going to call names. I'm just going to let anybody who wants to speak or wants to come up next, come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and then when you start, we'll give you three minutes.
I'll go.
All right? Okay. Yeah. After your introduction, which I'm not sure I, I feel like everybody in this room knows who you are, but...
Who is this guy?
Yeah.
Kelly Adie, I'm a, I grew up here. Deacon here for the last fourteen years. I'm going to use some words that I was, that I heard when I was a kid growing up that really stuck with me from coaches, my parents and stuff. And that's disappointed and ashamed, okay? I'm disappointed that two years or so ago, the Board said we were done talking about this. It was done. We weren't going to talk about it anymore. We're going to have a wrestling program, but here we are against that. I'm disappointed in the untruths and the misinformation that has been spreading around. I'm disappointed in how select few can have such a negative impact on the situation of their own. I'm disappointed in the community, business, and people who are in favor of going somewhere else or dissolve. If you're a businessperson, and we always talk about community supporting each other, and you don't want to support this, then I think that your businesses will be reflected on that. I'm disappointed in the black eye that this situation has caused and is causing our district and community. I'm disappointed in having to hear and explain to people from all over the state about what's going on because I do hear from all sorts of people. I'm disappointed in having to hear in parents and athletes to see what they have done or not done in the past two years to get better. Have you been going to practices, camps? Have you taken advantage of going to free clinics for technique and leadership? Have you taken advantage, what's that?
Yeah, one more.
Taken advantage of, of the boosters paying for stuff? I'm disappointed in the shady backdoor conversations that have been had. I'm disappointed in defending the community and telling them what's been happening. I'm disappointed in the outside coaches with the contacts that they've had. I'm disappointed that we may lose a program that I love and support very much. I'm disappointed when I hear someone tell me to shut the heck up, get over it, it's done. If you think that high school athletics or activities is all about winning, it's not. It's about leadership, hardship, sacrifice, all that stuff. Two thousand twelve, we had ten wrestlers out for wrestling. We didn't fill hardly all the way. Sometimes we had more managers and cheerleaders than, than people. It was down, it was up for about eight years. We did great. We're down again. We're going to ride this out.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Like I said, a lot of people are passionate about it, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Who's next? Come on up.
Brittany Walker, I'm the manager of the Belmont Community Department. I currently have three children, all three girls, that go to high school here. And all three of them strongly support our wrestling team. They support football. They support softball. My kids have played in sports. They've never wrestled, but their dad did. Chris Bellin was on the wrestling team the entire time during high school. They had an amazing wrestling team. It's said that after Tony Andrews left, the passion was gone. The kids don't want to do it anymore. Nobody's there to support them. Why did they not get as much support for wrestling as we do for football? Why don't we support them as much as we do for soccer? How come we don't support them as much as we do for softball? We already lost the boys' baseball team. How come? I grew up in Algonah, and wrestling was huge there. Wrestling overtakes football there. I expected the same from this community when I came here because I heard so many people talk so passionately about wrestling. One of my daughters is going out for cheerleading this year, following in my footsteps. I was a wrestling, football, basketball cheerleader. She wants to do wrestling. I know other kids that want to do cheerleading for it as well. Maybe they're not wrestlers. A very good friend of my daughter, Joslyn Bordwell, went to state this year for girls' wrestling, and I was so proud of her. She felt so empowered just to have it ripped away from her this year. I feel like a lot of these kids don't want to do it here anymore because they don't have that support that we're giving the football team. We don't have the support that we're supporting the basketball team. Soccer's merged with Clarion, so I've heard. Why? It's like we don't give a fair opportunity to every single sport. How come? I may not have a kid in wrestling, but I'm willing to go to wrestling practices. I'll help out where I can after I get off work. I'm willing to be there to support them at different wrestling meets. I'll be there, but you guys have to ask for it. You have to want it. And I'll follow what Mr. Adie said. It's not about winning. It's about going out there and trying their hardest. And if you're not willing to try, and if you're not willing to support as a parent, as a business, as a community, our wrestling team is going to die. So, again, we need to support them, and we need to bring it back so that we, these kids feel supported. They want to go out. Bring in coaches that make them feel like they matter. That's what kids need. That's half the problem with the respect and dignity in the schools, that kids don't feel like they matter. Make them matter. Give them time of day. Give them ten minutes. Go support them at wrestling practice. Take them. Ask them how their day was. That's all it takes. And I guarantee you, this will come back up. And this won't be an issue again because there's kids that want to do it here, not in Clarion. Not be forced to go somewhere else. This is their school. Good wrestling team, good community. Support it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Schaefer. I'm a former member of the BK Booster Wrestling Club. I'm a former president of the BK Wrestling Booster Club. So, obviously, the Booster Club's been around for a long time. They have done many good things. They've raised a lot of money to contribute to the purchase of wall mats, singlets for floor wrestling and competition mats, not, or just to mention a few things. Along with contributing funds for food, drinks, and other items for the youth kids, junior high, and high school. Where's that money going to go? A lot of us work youth tournaments. We raised a lot of money at that youth tournament. That money was for the Wrestling Booster Club. Where's it going to go? Who's going to get it? Why did we purchase an eighteen thousand dollar matlet for the high school just to close the program down? And I've been asked to read a few letters from some former BK wrestlers. The first one is from Logan Heberlin, brothers of the great Heberlin Brothers who wrestle here. "My name is Logan. I'm a former BK wrestler and four-time state qualifier. I can't be here today because of work. I was informed that the BK wrestling was going to be dissolved. Wrestling is not just about the sport of wrestling, but also about life. It teaches you just how far you can push yourself, how to manage hard times in your life, how to react when things don't go your way. It teaches discipline. It teaches you how to become a better person. You guys want to dissolve away a life. You are taking away from all the wrestlers that have ever wrestled for BK and the community. You are also taking away from the youth wrestlers. What are they going to do when they reach high school? Just hope another team will accept them, and if they don't, they get screwed out of their dreams, out of doing something that they love because there's no place to go and the way we want to take them." Next one is from Alexander Jansen. "Wrestling has been the biggest inspiration in my life. Ever since I started in high school, I was alone, felt unwelcome, and had no confidence. Wrestling made my life so much better. Tony Andrews and the Belmont Clemmie Wrestling Team, when I was there as a senior back in two thousand and sixteen, they showed me that I belonged. I went from a shy, reserved kid to a kid wanting to help and care for others. Getting rid of the wrestling program in Belmont Clemmie would be a tremendous loss in school activities and for child development. Without the teachings and discipline that wrestling instilled into my head, into my body of work, I would not have toughed out the United States Marine Corps, truck driving, or everyday tasks. There are many benefits to the wrestling program. It's needed for everyone. If you get rid of the wrestling program in this school, you might as well have ripped out dreams, aspirations, and quality in human beings. You can't call yourself a school of teaching and opportunistic outreaches and completely take away the most important, important sport you guys have for these children. There are other things that you can get rid of instead of wrestling. It would be appreciated if my children, who were to ever go to this school, to know that they can follow in their father's footsteps. Sincerely, Alexander Jansen, U.S. Marine Corps veteran, wrestled at Belmont Clemmie two thousand and sixteen." Third one is from Brandon Acuna.
Three minutes is up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bobby McVay. Hello, Kelly Adie. I was at the meeting, I think it was three years ago, where this all came up once again. And there were many wrestlers there that said they did not want to go wrestle for another school. There's plenty of discussion and was voted on to drop this topic. And yet, here we are. It's come up again and again and again. Now, we teach our students about Bronco pride, but I don't see where it is here. I think it's important to know, I keep hearing, the numbers aren't there, the numbers aren't there. Prior to the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two high school season, before it was decided not to rehire Tony Andrews, he had a full roster except for one person. The last board meeting, a parent had mentioned that their child had no one to wrestle with at practice. Well, Tony had two BK state wrestlers, one assistant coach and one volunteer coach. Logan Heberlin was one of them, a four-time state qualifier. Wrestled state, regional, and national tournaments, had several championships during his four years in high school here at BK and was a great role model. Jack Andrews, who was told by many that he knew nothing, has wrestled in national and regional tournaments, winning the top of Iowa Conference, wrestled in college for three years, has one hundred and forty-seven career wins at the high school IHSAA sanctioned championships. He tied for the most wins in Belmont wrestling history of approximately seventy-five years. He also brought his expertise of health and human performance, college curriculum knowledge, to an A-one school that brings weight, cardio, stretching, training, rehab, and dietary knowledge that is invaluable. Now Sharon, I don't want to point out, but with all respect, you mentioned that the kids needed to go where there was more competition or where it was greater. And I don't know what more you could ask for than what they were offering. I've known Tony for over twenty years. He has had experience with wrestling for four and a half decades. I have pages of any, all that information if anyone wants to look at it. Tony has spent hours with the children, taking them to doctor's appointments, chiropractors, and whatever else. His philosophy with all kids mattered, and he installed the value of respect and putting in the work to succeed. Did any of you that voted to dissolve this program, or with all due respect, Ryan, you said made a motion and then asked what it was about? Did you consider the upcoming wrestlers, the youth, the junior high, the cheerleaders? You know, we have a small football team this year. That's, there was a small handful of girls up for track. Are we going to drop all that? You know, we all could have a superior program if we went out and recruited the best of the best out there. But we don't do that. Our Broncos are homegrown, and we're proud of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go. Hi, everybody. My name's Tim Griffin here. I'm a past alumni of Belmont Bronco and proud of the Broncos. First thing I'd like to say is thank you to all the School Board here. It's kind of a no-win situation, and your time, efforts, and commitment to help the community are really appreciated. Thank you. But that's being said here, you've got the community that you can help and you can ask for. And I think that this meeting here, the public input, output, whatever you want to call it, we're about a year and a half too late. And I think that we've tried several times to get that involvement here, but it's kind of stumbled, and we've dropped the ball somewhere along the line. So, thank you again for at least allowing us the time and efforts to speak here. You know, as far as the Belmont wrestling program goes, six weeks ago, two months ago, we had a program. It may have been a program that was stumbling on numbers there, a little light on numbers and then, but it's a start. And like we said, it's ups and downs, ups and downs, same way with most of the extracurricular activities that we have. Sometimes we get a lot of people in thespians, community, community involvement and different things. But you've got to start somewhere. You've got a coach that was ready and willing to help. You had a core, core team there, I guess is the way to say that. And they were willing to do what they could to make the, make the system better and things. So, start somewhere. Think about it. When the Board here, when you're faced with these decisions, don't be afraid to get some help from the community and, yeah, and do what you can with that. The last thing is, it's never too late. You know, it's not too late to say, maybe we need to reevaluate this. It's not too late to say, you know, what we did wasn't quite right. And after looking back, maybe we need something else. And the last thing, you know, it's never too late to say, I love you. So, that's all I got. Thank you, sir.
You too, Tim.
Well said, sir.
I am Cherry Curtis, and I am on the Wrestling Booster Club. I've been on it for many, many years. Like you probably heard, they're talking about my son, a four-time state qualifier. My two other boys were qualified state qualifier. My daughter was a wrestling cheerleader. And I don't know, and I know people said they didn't hear, we had thirty to forty kids, youth wrestlers out this last past season. You know, they said it lacked communication. People didn't know that we had that many out. My mom was a part of the Wrestling Booster Club for many, many years. I hate to see the program dissolve because I know a lot of people have said, you know, that taught them a lot, you know, to be a part of that program. Because I really don't have. I mean, like you said, they're just, like any other sport, you have a lot of lack of volunteers to help coach a program. And they know, and I know a couple of people have told me already, they want to help a youth program. I mean, it might have just been so sweet and simple, and that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. It's not easy getting up and speaking in front of people.
All right, before you start the timer, I'm Joe Perez. I think everybody knows me. I've coached many sports here at Belmont Clemmie. I'm currently a junior high football coach and varsity golf coach, boys' golf coach. I've coached a lot of youth sports. I've coached wrestling for, I don't know, probably three years. I coached my boys' basketball team, my stepdaughter's basketball team. I've coached varsity baseball here for five years. So, I believe blue and, blue and green. So, anyway, I'm going to start out with, we decided to eliminate the baseball program, and I understand that. We didn't have the numbers, yada, yada, yada. It takes nine to make a team, okay? We currently are losing two students to that. They have open enrollment to Eagle Grove because they want to be part of a camaraderie, part of a team, part of a club. I have a son that's in sixth grade. Wrestling is his number-one sport, okay? And I've been part of the program since he was three years old. As far as the wrestlers here, I'm glad they got up and spoke, but there are many opportunities outside the wrestling ring to get better. Like Mr. Adie said, there's camps, there's Team Valley, there's other clubs. If we don't have it in a room, go seek it during the season outside of. I tell my son all the time, you can't be a champion by just showing up for practice. You need to go and involve yourself outside, put in the extra time and that extra work. That being said, when I was coaching wrestling, I had twelve kids, twelve kids in sixth grade that wrestled. Twelve kids. That's, what, how, what's the take, nineteen, thirteen, like fourteen? That's almost a whole team there, okay? Well, they've been going on and off because there's been talks of losing the program. What's that do? My son, I have to put up with it a lot that he just, well, we're not going to have a team, so I might as well play basketball and be an average basketball player. Loses his passion. Okay, that being said, my son, this is how, why I started out the way it was. My son will not go to Belmont Clemmie if there's not a wrestling program. I will, I will find another job. I will seek out employment somewhere else just so my son can be part of a team. And I'm not that, I'm not that rich, obviously, okay? So, in, in order for me to pay for my son, to drive my son five days a week to another town to wrestle, I can't afford it. I'm sorry. I'm going to have to tell him no. And as far as the youth program, I want to build it up. I honestly took my kid out of this youth program because Tony and I had, we butted heads, and it happens. But I brought him back last year, and I did have about thirty-five kids that did go out for wrestling. And ever since I've been involved, it's been over thirty. We've had a lot of success at the youth program. When I was coaching, we, I did youth duels, and we had, I don't know, five teams here, I think? Four or five teams? I don't remember that far back. And it was an amazing success. It brought kids together, team camaraderie, and it was great. And then it just kind of dissolved. But I am willing to put my time in to build that better, or build that back and be better so that my son can graduate where I graduated from and be happy to play as a Bronco and not have to be a Bronco and a, a Bulldog or a Bronco and a Cardinal. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'm Connie Akon, and I'm a former wrestler's mom. So, bend the gamut with that, with the weight loss and all that stuff. And I remember wrestling taught my son much, much more than sports. Taught him life issues. And without that program, he wouldn't have learned that. I know that for a fact. Because when you're on that mat facing the lights, you dig deep. And I was very proud of him. He was six, got six foot six. And I remember the time when the school thought about doing away with cross-country. And we got to have a meeting or bring that about so the people could speak. And cross-country, again, became part of Belmont, and it's still going on today. I appreciate that they can have this meeting tonight so that we can view, share our views and how important wrestling is and to keep it in our school system. Because once you lose that, I don't think you're going to get it back. We brought in esports. We brought in esports, we brought in soccer. Let's not lose wrestling. Thank you.
My name is Sam Rocko. I was born and raised here in Belmont. Went to school here in Belmont, graduated here. Came back to work at the school, never thought I'd set foot in school again. I was the only classmate when Kelly was in school. We took pride in our wrestling program. Lot of pride. Had a lot of boys go to state. Personally, you got one mother thinks grass is greener on the other side. I think when this all started with them wanting to go to another school, maybe they should have handed those parents their children's transcripts. Told them, go, go to the other school, it works greener. Now you got dissension amongst everybody fighting back and forth. Mr. Butler said he'd take it another year. Give our wrestling program another year. Proud of that. He stuck up what he wanted, but they said do away with it. Which is fine by me. That's less work for me at the school. Honest, think about it. It's less money for the people that run the concession stands. The FFA that takes over, runs the FFA or the concession stand, they're losing out. No problem. Uh, I know they pay different organizations in the school to clean up after a wrestling game. Less money. That's okay. You know, you made your decision. But maybe those kids, their parents, instead of coming every school board meeting, maybe you should have just handed them their transcripts and said goodbye. That's how I would have done it, but I'm not that way, you know? Like I said, my daughter was a cheerleader. I'm proud of them. Proud of the program we have. They got good kids on the team. If they want to go elsewhere, let them go. Yeah. Don't bend rules at the school though, for them to be able to leave for practice, for wrestling. School gets out at three thirty, you're out here at three thirty only. First. If you think you need out of here before that time, you know, get your schedule changed so you got to study all last class, last class and all, so. But that's how I feel. Keep the wrestling program here.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Ben Akoff. I'm a senior. Um, so I was a wrestling cheerleader this last year. And, um, I really found that I developed myself becoming part of this wrestling crew. And when I heard that it was gonna be disbanded, um, I, it, it hurt because I never was asked about any of that. And I can't speak for anyone else, just myself. I know that I really, um, I wouldn't have found myself up here if it wasn't for wrestling. And it means a lot to me. That's my grandmother. Um, and she kind of stole my thunder by bringing up, uh, her son who is my father. And I know that if he heard about this, he would be up here and he would be saying so many things. But it's me doing it now, and, um, I know that a lot, a lot of people, a lot of students at this school have really improved themselves by being in this wrestling program. I know that, like, they maybe don't see that they're improving and they're getting stronger, but I know that in the next couple of years, some of these people that were in wrestling this last year are gonna go to state, and I know they're gonna do well at state. I just, I see the improvement where other people maybe not, don't see it. But I know that this program is bringing a lot of character development to our school, and I feel like that is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Rosalyn King. Um, my father's Christopher Dillon. My mother is Brittany Walker. Um, I have had several friends in wrestling, and when everybody found out that it was dissolved, I don't think I've ever seen so many boys mad at the same time. I feel like the boys take so much passion in this sport. All the boys think of each other as family, brothers. Everybody looks up to each other. There is no one dumb. Everybody learns so much from wrestling. And I personally was wanting to be another one of the managers. My best, one of my best friends actually, Jocelyn, she went to state to find out that our program is gone next year. I had another friend who maybe didn't do so well this last year, is wanting to improve. How can they improve when we don't have it? My dad went to state, and if he went to go on to state, I don't think he would have gone to the military, learned as much as he did and learned how passionate people can be. Jake McVeigh and Neil Schneider, they are both former friends of my dad's, both went to state. It definitely brought them together. It bringing, taking away our team is taking away a family. And that's like separating a brother and a daughter, separating a father and a son. You don't want to separate a family. And I feel like dissolving this program is definitely what just happens. So bringing it back would bring back the family and spreading the word of, hey, we need help with this program. People would be willing to do it. Spreading the word of anybody else interested in wrestling, we'd be willing to take instant therapy kids or kids out in the country that open enrollment to other different schools. We have a ton of kids and a ton of help that people are willing to give and do. We just do not spread the word.
Thank you.
Yep.
Who would like to be next?
I don't want to talk in front of a lot of people, but I'm here. Um, my name's Dan Bach. I graduated in 2012 from Belmont. Um, me and my family moved back here a couple of years ago to grow back up in Belmont. Um, I have a daughter who's two and a half. And I'm hoping she can be a Bronco by the time she's in high school still. Um, ever since we moved back, it seems like we're losing teachers. I'm kind of wondering why. Um, we lost a baseball program. I know junior high has a lot of numbers in baseball. I'm wondering like, what's gonna happen when they get to high school? Are they gonna have a team? Are we still gonna reach out to other schools? Um, Perez coached me in baseball in 2012. There's two of us out. Um, you have down years in sports, and I think that's pretty normal. Um, wrestling, I didn't wrestle. I played basketball. I played four sports. Um, I feel like wrestling, you don't throw in the towel, and I feel like we're throwing in the towel. Um, football, I think we had a losing season by far all four years out of football. Um, I think we've had state ranked teams since then. With Corby Sanders team coming through, wrestling. Um, Mr. Adi brought in a T-shirt from, I think it was 2012. I don't know how many kids we got out, but I know it wasn't a lot. Ten kids. And I think we've had probably state qualifiers since then. Um, basically what I am trying to say is I feel like we're kind of, we're in a slope, we're going downhill, and we're throwing the towel in rather than asking what can we do to bring us back up? Who can we reach out to? Who can help in the, who can help in our community? Um, I wish this meeting was talking about maybe developing girls wrestling, but instead we're talking about getting rid of boys wrestling. Um, when my daughter gets to school, I hope she maybe has the opportunity to wrestle if she wanted to wrestle as a Belmont Clemmie Bronco. Um, and I'm kind of just afraid of, like Perez said, how many people in the community are gonna leave when we make a big decision like this? Um, and like he had said, I don't think you should be afraid to reach out to your community and see what, uh, see what we can do to help. And that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Um, my name's Jake Smith. I live here in Belmont. Not from Belmont. Um, never wrestled, don't have any kids that wrestle, but I'm here to support the wrestling program. All right, paraphrasing here, but it was said at the last board meeting that we should allow kids to go to a program where the competition is greater and where they can, where they have to work for their spot on the team. Working for a spot on the team would be great. It would be ideal even. However, given current roster sizes, in just about every high school sport at BK, it could be said that we should dissolve most of them. What's next on the chopping block? Now, what about the message that is sent from the leaders of this school to the youth? Essentially telling some of the wrestlers that, hey, thanks for your effort, but you're not good enough to make our good wrestlers better. So we need to allow them to go where they, they'll have better teammates to practice with, intentionally or unintentionally. That is the message heard loud and clear by many students, community members. I think that we can all agree that's a horrible message to send. Also, this is Pandora's box. What if we have a basketball player that comes through that is noticeably better than their teammates? Does that program then to get dissolved, uh, dissolved so this player can be a free agent and go where the competition is greater? I would think not. That sounds like AAU to me, not high school athletics. High school sports should be about having fun and not always winning, but having fun. But some of the great byproducts of high school sports are lifelong skills such as teamwork, time management, health and wellness, leadership skills, and school and community pride. There's a ton of money being invested into the BK school buildings and athletic facilities here. They really are top, uh, they really are top notch in this area. There has also been a lot of money spent in the community to attract and keep young family, a new daycare, new housing development, and new businesses, to name a few. But it takes more than that, something that money can't buy. We owe it to our kids and ourselves as a community to really drive down and understand the participation issue. As the fifth largest of eighteen schools on top of Iowa Conference, cutting programs should not even be a consideration. Let's do the hard work to understand why participation is down, then do the harder work to correct it. As community members, we need to start holding each other and our leaders accountable and also do our part to help these programs grow, which sometimes is as simple as volunteering to work a concession stand, which not only helps the Booster Club, but also shows your children that you have a vested interest in helping BK extracurricular activities be successful. Keeping the wrestling program alive is not delaying the inevitable. But it gives our kids an opportunity to compete with their teammates as Broncos while the leaders find a way to fix what is broken. It is likely, it is. Is it likely that BK is going to win a lot of duels? Probably not. But we could have some individual conference champs, state qualifiers, and maybe even see another kid get his name on the wall of the gymnasium. Let's find out. Let's find someone that wants to lead the program long term. Someone that has a top-down approach that cannot only coach and lead the varsity team, but can drive enthusiasm down to the youngest Broncos. These people exist. Now, I don't have all of the answers, but I do know that there are people in this community that are willing to help. Bring back the idea of a cross-functional community committee, and let's get the ball rolling in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you.
Don't hit the timer, you're not left. You're not left? Sorry. No. Great. Even bands. Okay, wait, 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 wait. I have, I have tiny little exercise. Okay? So as most of you know, I'm Molly Shaffer. Um, I would like to start this little exercise really quick. Um, I invite the board and school staff members along with myself to raise your hand. Now, as I ask you the questions, if they don't apply to you, please lower your hand. Okay? Uh, first, first, it's raised. Okay, okay. So first question, do you pass or present when you have children enrolled in the Belmont Clemmie School District? Okay? You currently live in Belmont. Did you graduate from Belmont? Okay? Did you grow up in Belmont? Huh, right? I guess winners. All right. Um, as you can see, my hand is still in the air. Um, this makes me really tearful, so I'm sorry. I'm one of those people that cries at like Hallmark cards. So, um, um, I live here. I graduated from here, and I'm raising my children here. And I grew up here, and I'm proud of this community. Oh, gosh. You see, this meeting is about the importance of wrestling program. And it's reinstatement. However, I want to explain to you that it's not only wrestling at stake, but all of our extracurricular activities. I want to point that out, how and why. These activities can help strengthen children's minds. Yeah, sorry. And make them more successful and focus and posture them on their academic purpose. They can help build professional skills. Skills that cannot be learned in an academic environment. They can expand your social circle and allow you to pursue your interests. We all know that saying that there's no I in team, right? Well, I can honestly say that that is something I learned in those extracurricular activities. I couldn't win a softball tournament by myself or in a one raiding choir band by myself. It took the work of a team. Learning from each other and improving each other. Every single time that we stepped out on a match for the wrestlers, a field for football, a court for basketball, a track for track, and a diamond for softball. I have the honor to play with some of the hardest coaches and teachers that, that coached me, uh, throughout the years. Howard Dorman, Jerry Lane, Al Madison, Jackie Burke. These are just some of the people that had learned what it meant to take constructive criticism and use it to my benefit, to learn from my mistakes, to be proud of the growth with each year and what it meant to be part of something bigger than just myself. Something that we all should be striving for each and every day. These are the opportunities that I want my children and the other children of Belmont to have. If we don't keep fighting or in fight for our families and the kids to stay here in our town to give them the utmost opportunities to excel in not only academics, but in all those extracurricular activities, we might just be depriving the world of the next Elvis Presley, Michael Jordan, or Shawn Johnson. These kids are our futures, the ones that we take care of us. They will be taking care of us someday. The investment from the school should not be about the aesthetics of the building, but that of our teachers and our coaches. It is up to the administration and the board to not fail us in these areas. Last two years, we've lost some amazing teachers, irreplaceable teachers. Thank you. Oh, I should probably take those back. Thanks. What? No, sorry. Relive in high school glory. Thanks to mom for keeping these crackers alive. Here it was, mom. So, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll go. Um, since you guys probably all know me, Jayce Eka. Um, I don't have any kids that wrestle, so I really, this is just my personal feeling from, um, having a son that went, was part of the baseball team and going to play for another school that has had a huge impact on him. Um, we did that, last year we had eight players go to Eagle Grove. Um, this year we have four. It is possible to bring that back if we have a, if we have a coach. It's gonna be a rough few years, but that being said, I think it's also possible to bring wrestling back. Um, when I watched the meeting play out last month, all I could think about was, you know, I understand the, the wrestlers want to you know, I understand the, the wrestlers wanting competition, um, and wanting the good competition, but what about the kids who are not the diehards and they're not gonna go out? That's why we didn't have a lot of participation in baseball this year. Um, we would've had more kids go out if we had the program here, but the fact is they just didn't wanna travel and ride. And I think you mentioned that. Um, but the junior high kids, they're not, their parents aren't gonna be able to take them to another school. I, I wouldn't be able to take my junior high kid to Clarion or Garner. I mean, I work till four or five o'clock. They practice right after school. That would just be impossible. Um, and I think that would be accurate for a lot of parents. And in past meetings, it has been discussed that the youth program is struggling. We're not gonna get, what's the point in building up the youth program if you don't have a high school program? I mean, everybody else has spoken to the importance of wrestling, but we, they can open enroll, okay? The class of 2020, the class of 21, they lost out on a lot of key parts of their senior year. These guys can go wrestle their senior year, their high school years elsewhere, if it's that important to them. To, to wrestle, they can go wrestle elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Smith. I've talked before.
A couple times.
A couple times. Um, my concern about dissolving wrestling is once you dissolve one program, it's going to trickle down into other programs. If a kid doesn't get to go out for wrestling, he is gonna get a job, he's gonna hang out with his friends and think, well, I really liked making money at that job, so maybe I won't go out for track. Or maybe I won't go out for basketball next year, whatever. I just feel like, once you start getting rid of one program, kids are gonna get lax, they're gonna start enjoying other things because they didn't have the opportunity to do one thing, and you're gonna start losing them from every other sport or every other extracurricular activity. You also have the burden of families needing to get their kids to other towns. Like J.C. said, how are junior high kids going to be able to participate? We have a low-income school district, very low income. Families can't afford to drive their kids there. They can't afford to take time off to get their kids to other schools. How's that going to work? School permits? I wouldn't be comfortable having my fourteen, fifteen-year-old kid driving back and forth to Garner or Clarion, especially in the winter when wrestling is taking place. I just think these are all things you wanna consider. Once you start losing one extracurricular activity, you're, I think we're running a big risk of losing other things. I'd hate to see that happen. I, I personally am trying to make this town a place where people wanna come to, to grow, not somewhere people don't wanna come to. And I feel like if we start cutting things, we're just gonna turn people away from wanting to come to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a handful of people left that signed in. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, welcome. I'm James Seaverston, the Activities Director here at Belmont Clemmie. Um, there's been a lot of conversation tonight about how it's impacted students in the past and how it could potentially impact students in the future. I also wanted to throw out some facts to you guys, just some information. Um, so I emailed, um, the, all the A.D.s in the state of Iowa and specifically asked 1A wrestlers and low 2A schools uh, to give me a number of how many wrestlers they have in their, uh, high school program. Uh, thirty-eight schools got back to me. The average high school program has seventeen wrestlers in it. We currently had twelve last year. The average junior high program across these thirty-eight schools had eleven kids in them. Um, and the average open weight classes of these thirty-eight schools was four. Okay? Uh, some other numbers I wanna kinda throw out to you a little bit, um, is twelve girls' track runners, fifteen boys' track runners. We will on Friday for our scrimmage suit fifteen boys for football. Yep, that's right, fifteen. Play eleven there. Um, what I, what I want to leave you with is the word viable, okay? Wrestling is a viable program right now, all right? We have ten wrestlers, we have twelve wrestlers. Do we have a ton in junior high? No, but we have some. Sports across the country are a pendulum. They swing, one from really good years to really low years. If we are hanging our hat on the low year right now of ten wrestlers, or twelve wrestlers, whatever we have out, all right? We are impacting our future here at Belmont long-term, okay? Our program is viable. It can still run. The other thing that I wanna talk about is the precedent that you have set. As a school board, essentially you're saying that girls' track, that we cannot fill all of those races, we are not competitive, therefore it is not viable, therefore the precedent that you have set is we are going to cut that program. We have not been able to fill all the races in boys' track or girls' track in years. Yet we have sent boys' track runners and girls' track runners to the state tournament, okay? It is a huge thing to, uh, to run a program and be a part of all of these athletics. Um, there are solutions that we can work through. Uh, COVID, the COVID year for wrestling was a huge year for us because we didn't have it. We weren't allowed to have that youth program. And it really did impact us. Over time, we can rebuild it, but it is not something that we can hang our hat on and say, yes. Right now, we have ten kids. We can't run a wrestling program. We can't. It's very viable, very possible that we can do that. Please don't, please don't hang your hat on competition and numbers based on all of the other things that we currently have in our, in our school, all right? We are, our boys' basketball team has not won a basketball game in over two years. Are we cutting that program? Boys' track, girls' track, all right? What if esports starts to go down? Are we gonna cut that program? All I'm saying, okay? It is, we're looking at, we're looking at a lot of different things here rather than just numbers and competition. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anybody else? If nobody else wants to speak, we're, um, we'll move on to the next. Okay.
So my name's Nathan Easker. Ryan's here, doesn't really wanna to speak. I don't blame him. It's not a comfortable place to be, but anyway. I understand the passion of both sides, right? But I also understand the passion that these kids have. A lot of these kids didn't wanna step outside their comfort zone and go learn other coaches' styles, right? Go learn from other kids. A handful of them have already committed to learning and they, they see the things that they've missed, right? They've missed extra coaches, people watching, calling you out on things that, hey, and you could stop someone because you don't have one person working on one thing with one or two kids. You got multiple people trying to develop these kids. And I understand, yes, it grows. Wrestling brings a lot out of a kid. It teaches you how to dig deep. But it also is a strong coaching background that does that, right? Multiple coaches will impact kids and will help them today move forward in life. But also, a lot of these kids have already committed to it and they're getting, we don't have the support we need, right? A lot of time commitments from families, things that go on. A lot of these other sports that have low numbers, there is a real strong coaching desire for those kids to make those programs continue. But at the current moment, it's a very good opportunity for these kids to continue to grow. And I, and I, speaking for Ryan, he's very excited to go enjoy the program at Clarion where he can get more development. You know what I mean? And, and with him, some of his team members wanna go, that's great. He doesn't wanna open enroll. He enjoys the kids he has here in the Belmont community. He was late tonight because he's in cross-country, very passionate about that. There's a lot of things he wants to go off here. You know what I mean? It's just all those things. He doesn't wanna leave the community, but he wants to grow in the sport that he has a lot of passion for. And the best door we have is right next door. And carpool is a way. There's ways. There's coaches that have said, hey, you know, I mean, we can help hauls kids if we need to. So there's more than one way to help development. But right now, without the passion and the support of a coaching program that we really don't have to develop a lot of kids at the same time, in that little window that I have after school, it's hard to get them there, right? So let them grow in the team aspect and the personal aspect, right? Cause it's both. There's two ways of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm not gonna twist anybody's arm to go out there and talk. I think we have a few names left yet. But you also may have decided if you come in and wanted to speak that your point is already been made, and I can understand that. So.
I got any time left?
No, you don't, sorry. Man, if I let you go, we'll be here until midnight. We, we will all be very interested in what you have to say, but we'll be here until midnight. So, but if there's nobody else who wants to speak, we'll move on to our next agenda item. It's just housekeeping for, for our agendas. It's just discussion items. Or our letters, yes. We have written correspondence. We were gonna do those at the end. Okay? And I'm not gonna time the superintendent.
Uh, this, I have a letter, uh, dated the fourteenth from Zach Sandy and Ashton Williams. Belmont Clemmie's Board Members, as, as parents of a high school wrestler, we are frustrated and irritated at the fact that you voted to dissolve the wrestling program. After the vote to dissolve the program, we have already made calls and conversations to get our wrestlers into another district to wrestle, and I'm pretty sure we aren't the only family that has done this. Now, we are here to reevaluate the same topic with the possibility of another vote that would change from the previous, causing wasted time along with uneven conversations and changed daily routines. Last year, Mr. Butler put forth a great effort to get this high school wrestling program going without any full-time assistant coach, without any support from the school administration to see that he even had a chance to succeed. He was respected by the wrestlers and was able to get a couple of kids to give wrestling a try that hadn't before. As we can only speak for what we felt Mr. Butler did for our son, we want to let you know that this time and dedication did not go unnoticed or unappreciated. My thought on the wrestling program being dissolved is that unless Belmont Clemmie can guarantee at least one knowledgeable high school wrestling assistant coach and at least two experienced volunteer coaches that are dedicated to building the wrestling program with Mr. Butler, we would like the wrestling program to stay dissolved as other school districts do not have, do have the desire, dedication, and community support for the sport that our wrestlers would benefit from. Final letter is from David Butler, uh, head coach. School Board, Administration, and Gallery. Sorry I'm not at the meeting, but we are on our way to the state fair. The first thing I wanna say is shame on Belmont Clemmie School for not coming to the last two board meetings and speaking your mind. Myself and Angie Hansen, even though we have been on opposite sides, we have been the only two people that have done anything to promote wrestling from the community. Yes, there has been some misinformation from both sides, probably. Now the issue is ninety percent of the wrestlers have made a commitment to wrestle for another school and have been practicing with them and made a commitment to the BK girls to help get them where they need to go. Yes, I have had other boys talk to me about wrestling, but until the season starts, who knows who will come out? Who knows if the board reverses their last decision if my boys will come back out? Because no one cared to come stick up for them before. Wrestling is so much different than any other sport except for track. Yes, you are a team, but what it comes right down to it, it is about the individual. I agree with Angie. We don't have enough bodies in the practice room to make us go from good to great. Yes, I do feel for the junior high wrestlers and the wrestling cheerleaders. Yes, BK did have a little kid program and our junior high coach was the same person. But once again, BK needed more, and in my opinion, until you decide this is important and you do something about it, it will fail. If the decision gets reversed, and I am asked, I would accept the head coaching job back. But if it is reversed and I don't get the numbers out, I think you all will be having this discussion again. To those of you that have supported BK wrestling and me last year, thank you. To the rest of you, not so much. Last note, if you want wrestling to come back to BK, selling the equipment would be a horrible move. If you don't have mats, then no way to practice. I hope this time you think through your actions before you make a decision, and once again, where was the community? Finally, just a side note, but sending hate mail because someone speaks their mind and you did nothing to get your opinion heard, knock it off.
Those were, can I say something about that or not? No, like just one comment?
I will, I will make one comment about Mr. Butler. He did, he stepped up by himself. He did. He, he's an amazing man, I think, for, for his willingness to step up, his willingness to stay behind it, so, um, he, he cares and he's passionate, so I, it hurts him. This whole decision hurts me greatly. But, so we'll move on to our next discussion items, board, um. Anything, any comments or any future agenda planning the board wants to discuss?
Yeah, I have, I have an update. After the board's decision at last meeting, I have been in contact with the association to see how this proceeds if we dissolve the program. Two years ago, you recall, we were hit particularly hard in Wright County when the virus broke out. Uh, we were not able, Belmont Clemmie and Eagle Grove were not able to run baseball softball programs that summer. Uh, and, uh, we shut our programs down, but there were kids that scattered to different schools and played for other schools. That is no longer the rule. The rules have changed. And now if a program is dissolved, why then if athletes go elsewhere, they must all go to the same school? Because the state is now taking the enrollment of that school that dissolved and combining it with enrollment of the school to which these athletes attend and calculating classification based upon that. Now, it will not affect any of our neighbors. It would not boost Clarion Goldfield Dows from 2A to 3A, nor would it boost Garner Hayfield Ventura up to any higher class either. Um, I haven't checked on Hampton Dumont, but they haven't really been interested in sharing with us. They feel they don't want anybody outside of them. So, uh, food for the board to think about over the next couple of days.
Can I ask a clarifying question to you about wrestling? Um, girls' wrestling would never really be a thing, right? So girl wrestlers would have had to go elsewhere anyways this coming year, right? Unless the board decided that we want to start.
We really haven't taken up the issue.
That must be clear, but it doesn't exist in our school, never did.
Mr. Seavers, I was just gonna say on the back of.
Can I ask you something about girls' wrestling?
Okay.
It's more of a factual thing. So from a girls' wrestling standpoint, if one girl at your school eventually wanted to go out for wrestling and you had a wrestling program, you now have girls' wrestling. And so then if, we would have to create a sharing agreement with another school, um, for if we, if we did not want to post girls' wrestling here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you have for us, sir? That's it? Then I would, um, look for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Second, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. I know some of you were really.